Okay, welcome everybody to the town board work session of Tuesday, November 21st, 2017. And we are, I think a lot of people are here for Alapartis Road. Is that right? Okay, we're gonna just do the pass a quick law on the keeping of chickens. That'll take 10 seconds. I know we have some people here. And so, thank you for coming. And you, Robin, your daughter. Somebody had to bring her, we understand. So.
Is there any discussion on chickens? I have one question about the law.
You can certainly, the public hearing is closed, you can certainly ask a question.
It's, there's a description of property by property, which category you might fall into. In the R2A zone, if you have more than two acres, are you restricted to the two acre regulation? Or does it become multiples? If you have four acres, six acres, how does that work?
You're restricted to the regulations in the R2A district. You don't get the benefit of having additional acreage.
No matter if you're a 10 acre or 20 acre?
If you're 10 acres.
If you're 10 acres, then you, correct.
Eight acres.
Yes, the original law is drafted now, it's for 10 acres, you can have 12 chickens. So if you're in the R2A and you have 10 acres, then yes, that would be acceptable.
So let's put it this way, let's say you've got 10 acres.
Right.
And you have a piece of property, you have to meet the setback. So you need to make sure your coop is 65 feet away from your lot line.
Right.
And 100 feet away from another residence.
Okay.
That's it.
But then it's that limited number of chickens you manage.
You're concerned about the chickens, you want maybe, let's say 50, if you have 10 acres, you may want 50 chickens.
But if you have six acres, you don't get any more than if you had two acres.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
But if you have 10 acres, do you get 50 or not?
No.
No.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve sometimes.
Okay.
Not sure anybody's gonna be counting your chickens, but that's.
Why, you want more?
Does it add? You don't want 50 chickens?
I mean, not 50, but.
Then children just have to go against. Okay. All right, who's gonna holler? You wanna take that?
I wanna make a motion regarding amending, chapter 60 of the town code of the town of Newcastle, local law to amend the town code concerning the keeping of chickens. As outlined in this document.
It's a long summary.
And summarized in this document. Where is the where to for?
Well, we don't write it, we're using your package, so it's just been resolved.
So therefore, be it resolved, but the town is going to enact.
You should do it again.
In regard to chickens, is going to enact the co-change.
Yes.
Second, who in favor?
Aye.
That's it, it's official.
Yay, get your chickens.
All right. Okay, now we'll move on to our public hearing regarding the speed and weight restrictions on Alapartis Road. So we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Second, who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So if anybody's here for the, that public hearing, if you wish to speak. Do we have index cards? I mean, we usually do this in the assembly room, but.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't sound like that.
Sure, who just.
You can call your name on here, if you wanna speak.
And you have an address?
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, just name and address, please.
Thank you, sure.
I'll clear your second, so I can see what I'm doing.
And then when you're done, maybe just pass around if anyone wants to speak.
Yeah, and then we can get this.
I just, a little background, just, I know there was some discussion on the town board about lowering the speed limit to 15 miles per hour. I don't know if some of you people are gonna talk about that. I think our chief had indicated that a town is actually not allowed to. What, Ned can speak to that?
Right, and your state town law only allows roads to be regulated no less than 20, no more than, the lowest you can do is 25 miles an hour. So we cannot by law reduce it to 15 miles an hour.
Okay, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
There's a sign there right now that says 15 miles an hour.
Yeah, I said, actually this morning, I drove Alapartis and took pictures because.
Isn't that a recommended? It's a yellow sign.
It's a recommended speed, it's not a legal speed.
Right, it's basically saying.
It's right behind it is a 30 mile an hour.
I know.
Right, the road signs in white and with black lettering, that's the law, the ones in the yellow are recommended.
So it's saying.
That's always been done.
Then if you're the 25, he's 15.
Yeah, yell's or go crazy.
But you may, you may go off the road if you don't slow down.
Alapartis is a good 15 miles.
Karen Wells, 28 Applebee Farm Road, Croton on Hudson, representing the Greater T-Town Defense Alliance. First, I wanna say, I am so happy you all are taking this up. You know, safety's a big concern and we've had the roads repaved in our area and I think every one of us who lives there would say it's gotten scarier since then. I've had more near-death incidents since all of this has happened than I have had in the 20-plus years I've lived there, including a recent incident where I literally had to get off the road for a commercial vehicle that was coming around a corner and was taking up essentially three-quarters of the road. So I do wanna emphasize though, the restrictions we're talking about are not just for the safety of the people who live here. We have a lot of Newcastle residents who come into the community and one of the biggest categories, I would argue, are people who bring their children to T-Town Lake Reservation for camp. And they have a very strict policy for arrival and pickup. And during those time periods, we have a lot of people who, because they live busy schedules, are driving perhaps a little faster than that recommended 15 miles an hour and we end up in situations where it becomes increasingly dangerous. And the other component we're seeing here now is with the advent of programs and apps such as Waze, we're having people diverted into the local roads who don't know these local roads, including commercial vehicles. Just the other day, I had a commercial vehicle, large commercial vehicle that was sent to the Quaker Bridge via Waze and literally could not get over it. So I had to guide him out of the community because this is what's happening with the technology. So it's a combination of the infrastructure has changed, it has enabled cars to go faster. It also, in some cases, has changed the dimensions of the street and in particular, Alapartis. On top of that, we do have people, not just those who live there, but people who come into the community for different reasons and we need to find a way to allow people to do that safely. Another key component which happens in our community on a fairly regular basis, we have our community email list. And the number of times an email will go out first thing in the morning, especially after a windy evening, such and such lane is closed, such and such road is closed, you have to go this way. We were just talking about a time period, an extended time period, where we all had to use Alapartis to access 134 because Grant's Lane was closed and there were a couple of other roads closed. So that, so one winter, everyone who lived in that neighborhood and came into the neighborhood had to use Alapartis and it was a terrifying winter. So I thank you for taking this up. I think for the sake of safety, controlling the speed limit, controlling the weight of vehicles because increasingly, we're seeing commercial vehicles. And I think especially as you become involved in the proposal for the Hudson Bridge project, which I'm very happy to see that Newcastle is taking an active role here. As you become involved in that, that's some additional commercial traffic that could potentially be using these roads.
Anecdotally, I'm sorry to interrupt, as you said, in my head, anecdotally, have you seen much enforcement?
No, actually, that's a, that's a great issue. Because we are essentially the corner of four different municipalities. We get very, very little enforcement. So, and on the courtland side, it's actually the state police that patrol. But we see very few police vehicles in the community. And I will tell you, from having an accident, when you have an accident in our area, it's very confusing to try to figure out who is actually supposed to be responding. So you essentially end up getting, even if you have an accident, getting bounced around a little bit. And I know the police officers are trying to do their best. My father's a police officer, my brother's a police officer. So I have a lot of respect for what they're trying to do with the resources they have. And we are just this tiny community in the back, so. So if there are any things, I know in the Croton side, we just got one of those signs that tells you how fast you're going.
Speed rate.
Yeah, and I think that actually helps people, you know, they see it and they slow down. You know, not that we want them all over the place, but I think the ones where they get moved around can be quite useful in these situations.
We do that and we can actually, if we, I don't think anybody's against this lowering the speed limit and the weight restrictions. I mean, everybody's free to speak, don't get me wrong, but I don't think anybody's against it. And I think once we enact it, we should, you know, install, we do it on a rotating basis, those radar speed signs. I know we just got two more.
Yep.
And it definitely would be a good place to do it, since we're just changing the speed limit.
Maybe, great.
I think it would be a goldmine on Alapartis. Somebody wanted to write tickets.
You could take the Croton approach on, you know, 9A.
It would be a goldmine.
But again, thank you for taking this up. I don't think any of us wants to have something horrific happen and not, and sit back and think, do we not take the opportunity to prevent that? So thank you, thanks.
You know, I think one of the other things that, when you're coming down Alapartis Road, there really should be one of those mirrors on the other side.
It's a good idea.
Because cars are probably, they're never trying to cross, there's a stop sign at the end of Alapartis.
Could I just ask you to state your name?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Just 'cause it's a public hearing, we'd like the other people's name.
Because people can watch this.
Glendale Road.
No, we try, I think we've let, in other areas of the town, people suggested that and I think for some reason the DPW cannot do that.
Well, I think under the state law, it's not recognized as a traffic control device, the mirrors.
But what you can do, what other people have done, is you reach out to a property owner and if they really can put it on their tree or something.
That's T-Town, T-Town is on the other side.
Well, whoever owns a tree, you would reach out to.
I think it's within the town's right of way. I don't know, when you, when you, let's put it this way, it is, if you come down Alapartis Road and you hit Spring Valley Road, because of the way the road bends to the left, if someone's coming from the right, you can't see them. And they can't see you. And so they come in and they swing a left to cut through to 134 and you're sort of parked there. It actually, something there probably is.
I know one who's been raised with the chief before, he's indicated that it's not permitted. I've not explored with the law.
Maybe we should, maybe we should.
It's gotta be a remedy, it needs to be some legal remedy to do something.
The high-risk safety standards, I believe that's what it is, and they said it's not an acceptable.
Should it, should it need, does it need a stop sign there?
Oh, there is one, but it doesn't matter. Everyone stops there, doesn't matter.
What's block?
I mean, it's, it's like, if you can imagine a road that's only like 16 feet wide.
Yeah, it's narrow, that.
And then there's a road that's only 18 feet wide and then somebody's gotta make a left where you practically have to pull almost a, more than a 180.
What's blocking the view, is it the other trees or?
A stone wall.
There, well, you have a stone wall, but you also have the road curbs. So if you're looking, if you wanna make a left turn, you look left and you can see cars coming, but then all of a sudden you go right and whoom, there's a car coming on. It's very hard. I've taken the habit of looking both ways twice.
And that's T-Town's property on the other side, I'm not saying.
Yeah, I think that's. So maybe we can talk to T-Town, or I don't know what the town can do, but a private resident can talk to T-Town about potentially putting up a mirror over there.
Just to see on their property.
I don't think it's something the town wants to encourage if it's not the, an approved traffic control device or a permitted device to be up there.
And also common sense.
Right, and people can do that on their own.
But they, okay, you heard, you heard it then.
Thank you.
We're not, we're not encouraged.
We're not taking it back.
Not encouraging.
Right, right, right.
Exactly.
Hi there.
Hello.
Heidi Franco, 1059 Quaker Bridge Road, Croton on Hudson, also here for Greater T-Town Defense Alliance. Just wanted to. 'Cause you have visuals. Can everyone see that? See that?
Is that the stone wall you're talking about, by the way?
See that, what is that?
Well, it's down, there's a stone wall like a block all the way down the road.
School bus.
It was the whole length of the wall.
My kids were in that school bus.
But is it off the road? I can't say if I have.
It is off the road because there's a construction vehicle on the side. I want you to remember the very first day you sent your children on the school bus and that feeling you had. And I would like you to imagine how I felt when this was emailed to me.
Is that their first day?
It was not their first day and they thought it was cool for the record, but I did not.
And just so you know, from, on the left, on the right hand, if you're in the bus driving up the road, on the right-hand side, it's literally a straight wall up of Rockledge.
So there are children in this community that do not attend chapel class schools, they are excellent schools. I know you care about your children deeply. They still use your roads, they still are important children, though they are not course. Just saying, just saying.
Nobody thinks they're not.
Just saying.
We listen to you regardless.
That there are other children around, so just keep that in mind. And it sounds like you're all on the same page.
We're all on, I don't think that's really.
Yeah. So just from Laura Whitlinger, who's another resident who couldn't be here tonight, she wanted me to read a few accidents that have happened recently. Last month, a Toyota Camry going too fast swiped the wall, took out the side of his car and bent a rim on the vehicle. Traffic was stalled for three hours and no tow truck could rescue him. Last weekend, Saturday afternoon, motorist in SUV driving up the hill too fast ran a cyclist off the road. The cyclist was not injured, but the bike had a flat tire. Last spring, woman speeding down Spring Valley ran off the road and took out a good portion of Katie Wasserman's fence. In August, a 17-foot moving truck got stuck on Spring Valley and Alapartis. That's just a small collection of the things that we've witnessed. So again, not to belabor the point, but just to give you specific actionable examples of issues we have in this area. Thank you for taking the time to listen and congratulations on the chickens.
Hi, 200 Mantering 100 Glendale Road. I guess you're gonna circle to Glendale next. So I, I'm the one who brought the visuals and I can leave them with you and pass them around. But so this is that bottom famous moment where everyone collides into everybody between Spring Valley and Alapartis. This is how you see it, as you're coming down Alapartis, you have no idea that, let's see somebody who is coming down, that somebody might be coming along on Spring Valley Road. And this, I'll just pass them on, was me on Spring Valley Road coming towards that ramp down from Alapartis with, remember, Spring Valley Road is an east-west road. So when the sun is setting, you don't even know Alapartis exists, you're just having a little clue. So, and this is on Spring Valley right after the road was repaved. And what's interesting is with the road repaving, and I'll remind all of you about the Con Ed tree cutting, people think they can take shortcuts through the west end of Newcastle. But then if you've got a bad weather day, the roads are actually not draining well after all of this improvement. So you wind up, this is after Spring Valley, right by Hawks Avenue was repaved, after a rainstorm, after the road was repaved. So, you know, we're dealing also with a lot of inclement weather and you can't predict that as we drive those roads. And I'm sure everybody has experienced that in this room. We're very happy you're taking a look at this. We don't know if you're gonna find great solutions, but certainly reducing the weight and putting more signage. I'm not sure how you feel about speed bumps every so often. I don't know how people will feel about digital signs in the middle of the woods. I heard some people here like that idea. I just wanna be lost in the woods. So for instance, when you've come through the different roads repaving, you've had digital signs that read repaving tomorrow and, and, you know, they're flashing like neon signs on 42nd Street in the middle of the woods. It's, it's not really the community that we've chosen to live in to have that kind of signage, but.
It's only temporary, I understand, obviously, they do it on a temporary basis.
No, but if you wanna do the speed, like slow down or.
No, no, those are still, oh, but the, the speed.
You know, a permanent reminder that you're going too fast.
The speed radars are, are even temporary.
Yeah.
We do those on a rotating basis, the speed radar signs, they use, they do.
On the trailers.
What's that?
On the trailer, is she talking about the one?
No, no, they attach them to the signs too, they, they rotate them.
By what, by what, by what?
It's a little box. They rotate them, they put it underneath the sign.
Instead of curiosity, just thinking about the whole Waze thing, which I know, I've got, everybody's using Waze right now and they're all trying to like take shortcuts. Does the town have the ability to contact the mapmakers and to basically, you know, put like restricted area, no, can they, can they, you know, they, like even now when I go down.
Knockout signals for Waze.
No, you tell them that the.
Well, so, right, we looked into that when, with November 4th in Kisco Road, I think we reached out to Google.
No, you would say no trucks allowed on this road. Yeah.
We've done it also where it was.
So we can look into that, yeah.
I think we have to tell them, if we have a road with a truck restriction, we have to, I think we have to tell them because a truck using, like, you know, they have an aviation system for trucks which keep them off roads, but they're not allowed.
Yeah, 'cause it's, 'cause it is, it's definitely, it can definitely get hairy with.
This reminds me of, of Whipple in 117. So what can, if there is a identifiable dangerous area, whether that means by accidents, whether that means by the curbs, whatever the analysis needs to be.
Sightlines.
Sightlines. Can we, at a minimum, talk to Con Edison or whomever we need to say, move back the pole? And then number two, it's private property, I assume, but what can ultimately a town do if that is an issue of safety? You don't wanna eminent domain so much property, but is that, can you start a communication?
Make a green sightline easements to.
Can you start a communication with the property owner and say, listen, I'm sure you're not getting any use out of that slab right there and we can knock it back even 15 feet and while people, they love trees, and I don't mean to hurt anyone who loves trees, but I love people more than trees, so if a couple of trees need to be moved out, so it's. Right, something like that, we could work out an arrangement where to get the consent of the property owner to give an easement for maintenance of the traffic lines, if you will. And then maybe the Con Ed about pushing back the pole if possible.
We could do that as well, right. So they should meet Jerry out there and walk it.
It's complicated though, because you might know, I don't know, but I think some of these walls, retaining walls are historic.
Yes, they are landmarked.
Is there one right here that, because it seems to be a bad sign.
Well, this is the view right where you're pointing, probably coming down.
How far is, how far is the?
It goes all the way and this, these walls, this is what it looks like. It's kinda like a Le Mans experience.
I gotta drive this so they can hear it echo.
I don't see, I don't see, I don't see the pole, where's the pole in this?
It's, it's.
You can't see that it's right here.
It's right there.
You have a stop sign.
But I'd have to go and look, but.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe something worth exploring.
No, no, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, and this is what it looks like further up. It's kind of a dark picture, but what you have in that Le Mans spirit, there's the far ridge and you're coming down Alapartis and you're winding the out, the, that ridge, you're on the ridge, hugging it. There used to be a mirror somewhere along that spot, 'cause there's a major blind spot and then there's a couple of more lesser blind spots, depending how fast you're driving. And the mirror's not there anymore.
Yeah, I think, actually, I think that probably is a good idea. I mean, I think there needs to be common sense, I think we should go there with Jerry and the chief and take a look at it because you are, you're blind going around a corner and it's one thing if you've got a Camry and a Outback, it's another thing if it's an oil truck and the SUV.
I can give you all of this, yeah, this is how it feels as cars are coming your way. There's just not really enough room for a two-way with any speed involved or any bad weather. So, and anyone who's biking that.
That's the other thing, it's a biking, a biking connection. And Spring Valley is a biking connection, Glendale, Quaker Ridge.
I mean, I'm totally on board with reducing the speed here.
And it's a.
And I, I think the two things, at least immediately, are enforcement and then speaking with property owners and seeing what we can do, if anything, about.
Putting on mirrors or anything else.
For me, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the other, I don't know the road and it was gonna throw something out there and I don't. Making, making part of it one way, that's still a creative issue.
Oh, I don't think you'll, I don't, I don't even know what people locally, how they respond to one way.
That, I guess.
They go nuts, 'cause there are very few ways out of there. In fact, on the middle of that road.
There's only two roads out of there, basically.
Yeah, in the middle of that road at, at quite a pitch, there's a sign for, unfortunately, you know, pickup, for emergency pickup if there's an Indian point bough, it's on that road. So, I'm gonna, making it one way could be really miserable. Okay, I guess I'll shut up until you do Glendale.
Thank you.
Well, we don't, we don't have Glendale on the agenda now, but you said it's next.
There's no reason we can't look at it.
No, no, I understand, but I mean, it's, well, we didn't, we didn't open a public hearing for it, right, we have to, we have to get on the agenda, open a public hearing.
I thought Glendale was added.
Resolution, yeah, for five ton.
We have a public hearing, right?
Part of here, it's right here, yeah, section two.
Yeah.
So we have the public.
Florida and Glendale, right?
I thought that was what we said the last time that we.
We could talk about that.
I mean, I'm happy to postpone, go back.
You know, the law only deals with, um, Fort Alapartis. Now Glendale's already on, on page eight of the packet.
Were you talking about?
Right, are you not referring to today?
You talking about the speed limit?
Speed.
You were talking about the speed limit.
And, uh, five tons, now you're doing speed limit, but there's.
A five ton is already in the current law.
Five tons on the, it's already on there.
Yeah, that's already the current law.
So we would have to open another public hearing.
For the speed.
And we can't do it tonight, we have to give notice and all that stuff.
Right.
And then for the speed for Glendale.
So we'll put it on the agenda, we'll get it on.
Sure.
And you're not talking about wait anywhere tonight?
We are.
We're talking about wait. We don't have Alapartis.
Only Alapartis.
Glendale wait is already done. You just have to do Glendale with speed.
Okay.
And that'd be a separate public hearing.
Section two of the current law already has Glendale on that.
Yeah, I know, with the signs for five, five tons.
Oh, five tons, right.
It's already up.
Right, we would have to do separate public hearings for the speed.
So I guess one of the questions I would have back to Alapartis, when it comes time to review Hudson Wellness Center, you know, I, I think you did a great thing with Sunshine to restrict construction and travel and so forth on Alapartis and they agreed to navigate their people out towards 9A. I don't know if you're able to do the same thing because it's on courtland property, to ask Wellness Center to also not bring construction supplies and extra guests in down Alapartis.
We could have.
Can we restrict and restrict and we're also, it's our property too, even though it's.
We can ask with respect to our roads we can. I, all I know is we sent a, sent a letter, which I'm not sure has been posted, has that letter posted, the one that's being added?
It's restricted by way, you did.
Because, you know, you have 23 acres of their property.
But it said we have property, right?
It is, it's not.
Hours.
No, you know, we don't have, obviously, approval over that, um, development.
Was that posted? Wasn't, no, no, it was a different letter.
But we are definitely looking at the traffic implications and we've written a letter and we are concerned about that.
Well, we're, we're an interested party, right?
Yeah, 'cause we're an interested party because it affects our roads.
That's a legal, that's a party.
So to the extent that we can mitigate that, we certainly will.
Yeah, no, I understand. Now, is interested the highest you can be versus some other status?
Well, involved.
Ah, yeah.
So you'd be involved because there's 23 acres on your.
No, because. You're only involved agency under the law for secret purposes if you're granting permits and approvals, which the property is owned solely in another municipality, so we would not be.
Even though they will be sharing water with the Newcastle Aquaphor, for sure.
Again, I'm not familiar with the details of the project, but they have not applied for any permits from the town. And that's something, by the way, that we raised, an issue about.
I know. I'm just wondering if we could step up further also, because as they add more traffic to Glendale, you do have all of what some people are calling T-Town property. It's actually Austin Watershed owned on the far side of Glendale. You have residents like myself in the Topman Zone. One side you have Watershed owned by Village of Austin, I think, right at the corner of Glendale and Spring Valley, all the way heading towards Wellness Center.
All of that is Austin's property?
No, there's some carve-outs, but there's a huge chunk.
We didn't know that.
Yeah, I can actually, I think I have one of those maps here. And there's a lot of, you know, T-Town interest because of the biodiversity. There are turtles that nest and so forth that cross the Glendale Road that get constantly hit and speed and, and traffic on Glendale to satisfy the Wellness Center is not good for Newcastle.
We are gonna do everything we can to influence and, and, you know, and have the kid on behalf of the residents, the concerns for that project.
Great, the yellow you will see intersects with Glendale Road and that is the watershed.
I want to see that, I didn't know that. Do you have anything else on this law?
On which one?
For, for the public hearing.
Oh, on this law.
'Cause all the lawyers are gonna yell at that somewhere TV from the.
Well, you're not really talking about Glendale, so. Oh, on this law, um, well, you're not really talking about Glendale, so.
It's like the hearing.
I will, I will step out for now. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that you're taking your help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then, did you, do we need to consider sending a public hearing?
Just, just to keep it uh.
Or that you have to prepare a law first.
Glendale, yeah, yeah.
Anybody have anything on Alapartis?
I am, those are my list.
So we will get on the agenda Glendale and another day we'll have on the agenda that, the club. And uh, you guys will be put on notice and everything.
Are we voting for it or are we not voting?
No.
No, we have to close the public hearing.
Um.
Thank you.
Can somebody close the.
Do we wanna close it, keep it open for written comments?
That is, that is.
Well, we have to.
We won't, you can't, we don't.
I think so.
There are many people who are on holiday from the west end.
Yeah.
So we keep written comment open for that.
So, yeah, I move to close the public hearing and keep it open for written comment, what day is it? Until noon on uh December twenty eighth, on November twenty eighth, November twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. Yeah, November twenty eighth.
Wait, November twenty eighth?
Yes.
Yeah, we.
We're on, I, we're, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, I don't think there's really much controversy.
It's we're on the same page.
It's really, people might be against it, to be honest with you. If you know anybody against it, they should write letters.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is becoming like our community meeting.
All in favor, right, right.
Aye. And then we're gonna vote.
I think it's kinda rude that you all leave. Seriously.
Well, Martin's still there.
I have to stay, you have to stay.
Next.
All right, next thing is the um.
At least.
We have the proposal, we have another public hearing we have to open regarding the proposed water man, chapter sixty, it's already off site. Parking for other uses not listed.
Second, it's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody here for this public hearing? Nick, you wanna give a little summary?
Sure, so this is on page sixteen of the package, it's a local law that's being recommended by the town planner and planning staff with respect to your parking regulations and your zoning code. And your parking regulations set forth minimum parking requirements for off-street parking spaces that need to be provided for certain projects. Does a catch-all phrase on page sixteen, page four of the law dealing with other uses not listed. And that language is being revised to read that the approval board, most cases the planning board, would have reasonable, require reasonable and appropriate off-street parking requirements type of uses that are not covered in the categories listed above by the planning board, zoning board where applicable, which shall consider all factors entering into parking needs for the use. Where the use is not subject to review and approval by the planning board or the zoning board, then the building inspector makes a determination in accordance with traffic manuals. It's just clarifying set in the standards that get done when the specific use such as a theater, light industry, motor vehicle, athletic training center is not listed, it's a catch-all provision.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we move to close.
Vote for Jerry, we're gonna.
Uh.
Vote for Jerry. Close the public hearing and leave it open for written comments till uh till noon on November twenty eighth, second.
Same thing.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Correct.
I think we're not. Okay, so now um.
New sign?
No, we're not up to you guys yet.
We've just slightly devolved, got smaller.
Not up to you, I'm just kidding.
Whenever you.
I'm just joking, I'm joking, I'm joking.
No, 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 joke over here.
Were chickens before?
Yeah.
All right, what'd you change?
So, here, we do uh.
In my artistic opinion, with all due respect, my.
We do two separate, two separate things.
Sir, sir.
Here, I'll tell you.
Well, actually, maybe it helps to have a, these are same scale drawings.
Love it.
We had shown you this two weeks ago. Which was, everybody thought was a bit too big, so we sort of proportionally reduced.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Bye. Take care, thank you. So instead of total height of eight, like from the, you know, um maximum, no, minimum height actually, or maximum height at the highest ground, eight and a half feet previous to the top of the ridge becomes seven and a half. So the bottom still is like seven feet, so this I'm showing six-foot person, but somebody over six-six still will not, if by any chance comes so close, will not their head underneath, just to protect their. So.
Scales.
Every, yeah, everything got smaller. Uh, this, this was shown as two-six before, two-ten, one-ten now. And the spacing in the airspace you're looking at was three inches, now it's two inches. This, this columns instead of ten inch uh square become nine inch square.
I have a problem with that, that one inch is.
Are you doing a flat roof on it, like in this picture?
No, if the roof is in angle, so if you, this is.
Here's, here's a. Pass that around, that's it.
Flat on top to me.
No, it's actually.
It's a low pit.
Because it's a too tight it, yeah.
I don't think they're gonna have the claw, so.
It's, it's a hard seat, yeah, I mean, I mean, you need to do a little bit of.
Claw, I don't know.
You're really, you're really.
So, so it's really, but probably in the real case, a question, I always wonder if it's, so I'm sorry, but if you're sitting in your car going out of the train station.
Is it like sands the cross, I assume? I think they're just showing you that.
And the bottom of the sign is at one-six, are you going to be able to see what the sign says over the way you're going?
You're like, you're looking straight at the middle of the sign at that height, yes, yes.
Yeah, basically.
You are, are you?
Okay.
But it's rare to see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, bro.
This is at least like four.
Four feet tall.
Four something tall to the center, so this, the yellow area is what you will be seeing as a signage.
I think, I think. Isn't the sign that's out there now at the same height, then we do the same, it's a size and height, the sign is out there now.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they're what, they're, they're plywood.
The wood of plywood.
Yeah, plywood is basically four by eight and that's what you're looking at, correct.
Right, that's the sign out there.
So you have a little height on the plywood and that's what it's gonna be.
But we did, we did it the same height, too.
So you'll have the extra around the plywood.
Yeah, you, you basically.
Your, your plywood goes up to where the yellow is?
This is the sign board, you have the where the yellow is, yeah.
That's the plywood.
That's without it.
Yes.
Got it, so then there's gonna be a roof over that.
Correct, this is the support for the stone and it's good.
It's definitely not gonna block the sightlines coming out of the parking lot.
No, no.
I, I admittedly, I defer to.
I think you did a great job.
The steel, the, the.
It looks, it looks.
I think it looks, the scale.
We're responding to trying to.
Looks good.
I make the scale. I look at this, I'm not, I'm certainly not an architect, like, you know.
Yeah, looks good, I'm okay.
But I look at this and honestly, it's, last time it looked a little big, it did look a little big, I agree, and this, and this time it's like.
Yeah.
Yes, I know, it's the same, you can see.
This time it seems like, last time it almost looked like the structure was like what you're looking at, this time it's, you're looking at the sign surrounded that I think, you know?
Good.
I think it's good, unless you did a bigger guy next to it, it's a little gross.
Yeah, next time we'll do an eight-foot guy, the sign's a bit smaller.
So you did the trick, so the only thing is just to reiterate last week, just like, you know, we want high-quality materials.
Right, right, I did, I did, when I look up, I had to look up galvanized.
Yes.
Galvanized aluminum.
Whatever it was.
Anodized, yes.
Anodized, yes.
See, we actually saw a, saw a project in the city where they did um anodized aluminum storefront to make it look like steel sections. So it looks like a steel column, exposed steel, but it's actually made of anodized aluminum profiles and it's finished in this nice matte black finish, so.
Except that looks like it was easily scratchable, so that was, I, yeah, I know, finish maybe, yeah, it's, it says things, I think we need to explore that options of, you know.
Right.
We'll do that.
But that, that material is a big storefront material.
Yeah, yes, right.
We have to.
Material and durability and prices.
So, so, so we, we, now that we got scale, I think we have range.
Yeah.
We've done some more details, finish those up, we'll go get contractor input to get some basic cost information.
Well, that's right. So from the side elevation is this one, sort of cutting through the section through middle and this is another section through the column.
Right. You guys should also uh, add a school board, you know, needs to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's what we're thinking.
Maybe you wanna present to them and get on their agenda.
Yeah.
And then if you do, what I would suggest is your changes to uh.
School.
To what?
Chaplain's.
Chaplain's. Okay, yeah, sure.
Welcome to CCS day.
Right, right.
Right, or maybe you put one on one thing and one on the other.
Yeah, cause there's two, yeah, two faces.
Right, you have this little sideline.
Yeah, put that Luca's with a sideline there, for their presentation. It might be helpful too, like, you know, as you progress before you, you know, if you just give samples of the materials, you know, just the.
Yeah, same.
Anodized aluminum and the copper and all that.
Yeah, okay.
And it's important that they know that, you know, this was a starting point and and, you know, they're, we, they're partners in this thing and uh, you know, we this is not a done project, I mean, you guys put a lot of work into it, I don't wanna get you nervous by saying, you know, but this is not a done project that we're basically saying.
Far from it, of course, right, the architect gets a whole splashy sheet together and.
We, we understand that, we have quite a key project in that.
Well, maybe next year, yeah, so.
Oh, my gosh.
It's already been a long project.
But uh, this isn't.
Good.
This looks great.
Thank you very much, you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's a lot of work, thank you.
Yeah, looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yes, please, please, if you can do that, I'll be glad.
That's our next.
Okay.
Okay, all right, good night.
Good night.
Thank you, sorry to make you wait.
Thank you.
That's all right, no problem.
Do you wanna keep that?
I just want you to copy.
Yeah, you can, you can keep.
Clean energy, electric vehicles.
Yeah, you can set, you can have the rest.
No, you can keep them, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll talk about the clean energy, uh, community's grant to avoid the electric vehicle. I think from.
So all the emailing wasn't enough?
I, I think, I think we, there's a consensus that the shuttle uh may not be uh used as much as some of us think.
Yeah, but this is, you know, I'll speak, I'll speak for myself, I wanna speak for everybody.
No, I think everybody.
I think you're speaking for me, too.
Okay.
Surprising.
Jeremy Slade is the greatest guy in this room, am I speaking for you still?
No.
Oh, sorry, um, so, you said. Our concern collectively, our concern is that it's not going to be used as much as we like it to be used and it's not going to be as valuable, even though it's certainly environmentally um, the, the right path to go with that type of vehicle. Uh, I don't think it was saying no, because we've already agreed to move forward where we are now, but is there other uses that can be more valuable to the community than this particular trolley or vehicle that is limited? And that's our concern.
I see it most valuable, but I don't know if it's gonna operate then. The most valuable time, I think, is if we have a performance at the Chapel Performing Arts Center and people wanna go to dinner or park at Chappack and go downtown for dinner and take a shuttle back for the show, but that's the only time I really see anyone using it.
So, so folks, can I have something here?
You don't, you don't even wanna come into this conversation, right?
Uh, not really, I, I, I mean, because I am, we were selected for this grant award based on performance with cleaner greener. Last June, you guys made a decision to move forward on the electric vehicle as a priority with lighting as a secondary. We wrote our second application to DEC, we asked them for a buy so that we could redo the application cause we spent some time trying to find the best project because you guys wanted to be creative and we struggled with the SAP and really tried to come up with a good project that would be beneficial, meet all of DEC's criteria. So we then gave them our second grant application, which listed both of these projects, knowing full well that, you know, we weren't sure that we could accommodate both projects, but we put them both in there. We, you know, have been moving along, trying to find out more information and um Hal, Halah, you've raised some really good questions, which has caused my office to do more detailed analysis. We are in the process of doing a route analysis with elevation considerations to really determine whether or not this is possible with our climate, with our topography. And um, the manufacturer asked to see the route, the elevation, the distances, so they could run that detailed analysis for us. So I will be able to provide that, that information tomorrow, um.
Okay, and I got, talked to the senior center to get a distribution of trips and I'll send that to, once I finish it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and we had, we had initially, prior to even looking at this, talked with the senior center, looked at senior programming and the mileage limitations in an electric vehicle are really limiting, particularly since our seniors take really big trips.
Seventy-five, is that, is that right?
He, he said with the larger chassis, with the six battery, it's more like ninety miles, I mean, but to give.
Even then.
To give him the elevation and the potential routing is critical because he's looking at elevations in relation to distance, knowing what it is per charge, so I'm putting it in the hands of people who deal with this every day, we like it, absolutely.
And we don't have, you know, we don't have a marriage with Summit Greenfield yet, either.
No, we do not, they have a responsibility to run a shuttle, period, period.
Regardless, right.
The, the, the opportunity to create an electric situation out of their responsibility was something that you folks were interested in doing. If you want to, regardless of this point, we need to know more information before we start talking to other places.
Right.
And I know Ed had sent around a bunch of towns, Motive had given me towns, the biggest difference in most of those communities, if they're using electric, they have more than one electric.
Oh, sniff got a rat robin.
Vehicle, exactly, they're not relying on one vehicle for service.
Well, then it becomes prohibitively expensive at that point.
Well, absolutely, absolutely, and so two, so we need to finish this research to see if, in fact, it works. If it, if the analysis comes back, given our topography, it gives us a stronger argument with DEC to limit our, our project to, cause we have to go back and rewrite our contract at this point. You guys haven't signed a contract, but I have a draft with, which lists two projects. You specifically asked about a combo, um, oil-electric, gas-electric, hybrid.
Right. Hybrid.
Right now, our contract prohibits that, I would have to have conversations with DEC to see if they would allow that. That needs to be considered, I believe, once we get the analysis of the route.
Right.
Okay, because that's, that's the make it or break it.
We need to.
Right, if they say we can't do an electric vehicle because of the route, then the hybrid is better than a gas, goes like.
But within reason, within, within reason, because you're probably using a lot of gas to go up the hill, it's not like you're gonna be.
Well, but, but again, does that mean? Right, but does that, but does that meet with DEC's criteria, you know, it's not just our preference.
Still better than.
I just, I just, I just add, I was thinking about what you wrote, um, and I realized that I didn't quite use the right language. But I do know that, let's say, the heat of the summer and the cold of the winter, at some point, we're gonna have to have either the air conditioning or the heat going. So even if the car itself isn't moving, that's gotta be.
Yeah, well, and, and that's all part of the next round of information I'm providing tomorrow.
Okay.
So, you know, what, and what does the cold do to the electric supply? How does heat and air conditioning affect the electrical supply? You know, those are all factors that they're gonna put into this program that they use to do an analysis of the routes. Okay, so and, and, and it's, I, I'm assuming it's pretty detailed, cause he specifically asked me for route, for elevation, for distance. So this is not a fly-by-night thing, this is really getting down and dirty and serious. I would imagine that once I have this information, I will circulate it to all of you, we're gonna have a decision to make whether we move forward, whether we're able to move forward with a completely electric vehicle. Whether we can move forward with a hybrid that DEC would support. So once I get this analysis, I need to call the state and have some conversations with them. We do not have enough grant money to do both lighting and the electric vehicle. Right now, that contract needs to be changed because it lists both projects. So we have to go through a rewriting phase, they need to send it back to their attorneys, they need to look at our allocation in accordance with their goals and objectives. I don't wanna be at risk at losing this money, cause we've worked really hard to get it, I don't know how serious that is.
When's our deadline?
We're way past that deadline. Um.
It must be, obviously, it's a work.
I mean, hon- honestly, I would, we need to come to terms on this before your last meeting this year, okay?
I mean, when, when, when the SAB came, at least when we spoke with, and I spoke with the SAB, I think it was Jennifer who, I.
Jennifer Meep.
Jennifer Meep's like.
Um, you know, one of the things that I voiced my concern was, not that it wasn't a good idea, assuming economics were viable and you could have a marriage with Summit Greenfield, but it's really the usability of it and how, you know, how valuable it be in terms of actual use beyond just Summit Greenfield shuttling, for example, we discussed with the, with the, you know, seniors and other events.
Yes.
And, and now that we're discussing it again, I, I think collectively, that's an issue.
Well, and, and I think that is an issue, I mean, based on the information we have, if you look at the peak times of the train,
It's viability beyond.
we can't even get a lunch service in with an electric vehicle. And, and Summit Greenfield is obligated to do peaks and lunch, Monday through Friday and Saturday morning service. Now, if this is a go, the town may want use of this shuttle vehicle on the weekends, you know?
And then becomes an economic issue for the town, a fiscal issue for the town, because if it's not part of Summit Greenfield's agreement to use it at other times, who's paying for it?
Well, well, I think, I think a weekend, a weekend thing, you know, I think what we have to do is we, we need to outline all potential uses, I mean, and I think that, you know, with an eight-hour charge window, which is what surprised me more than anything else. I don't know what eight hundred cycles are, sorry, I didn't know what that meant.
It's a full drain of the battery.
Oh, thank you. But what, at an eight-hour charge window to get, you know, whether it's seventy-five or ninety miles, it sort of limits it, so.
Well, a- absolutely, I mean, and, and so if you wanted to use it for Wallace, for showtimes, you, you know, these are designated uses and I would imagine the, the requirement for Summit to do a shuttle is born in the finding statement. It's born in the board's decisions, you'd have to make decisions as to whether or not you wanted to alter that to make this vehicle usable for the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't sound so.
Right.
Well, it's also, I also feel to a certain extent, we've sort of gone behind, gone from a simple concept to a complex uh logistical arrangement and a complex legal arrangement.
Sure, but it's not a great in theory that we're gonna have an electric car and then all of a sudden, there's only another factor.
So if you are of the mind to change the project right now and not do any more analysis on it, you know, I need to hear from, I need to hear from you.
Just to throw that there too. What's the, the, this, this information aside, which we need, but what, you know, I have heard during the election, I heard from, did hear from seniors who maybe don't really want. I have heard during the election, I heard from, did hear from seniors who maybe don't really wanna be driving that they have no way to get from business district to business district. So is it something that we could just kind of run it like a like a regularly scheduled kind of loop trolley service?
Well, I'm not a bus.
Where it's a loop between Millwood and Chapac and then potentially up by uh Chapac.
So. Yes, and so so what are the things that I did with that sample schedule was just trying to begin to formulate how it would be used.
You know, and not not in Summit Greenfield, they do what they still need to do.
I'm sending. No, no, I I am using, what I'm sending motive is a run from Chapac crossing down to the train station. I am also sending them a run that includes Chapac to Millwood because we need to know under both scenarios with both elevations, so they will get two profile, elevational profiles and distances based on what we suspect to be the most common routes for this vehicle to take. I mean, and and I'm not a transportation expert, I don't run a bus company, I don't do any of that. So I'm kind of just kind of looking at windows, you know, doing what you did, Hala, looking at the hours of the charges, you know, I'm sending motive our sched- our potential schedule. You know, we have a responsibility, we don't have a responsibility if we engage with Summit Greenfield, we have a responsibility to do peak trains, that's five hours in the morning and five hours at night, you know, and you 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 know, we still haven't addressed that in between, you know, and I, so so.
No. Well, we could consider not having a we anymore and they still have to operate the shuttle as determined.
But. Absolutely, and.
And we can, if we wanna use this vehicle, use it for our own.
There is no vehicle unless you are going to pay the difference, that difference.
Well, right, right.
Yeah, but I think, but I think what Lisa's suggesting is that whether it's this vehicle or not, the idea of exploring
uh, a public loop, whether it's electric or hybrid or something else, just a shuttle, I I mean, something else is just a. A public transportation system that's.
Yeah, no, it's a fantastic idea, folks.
And maybe we put in a charging station specifically for this bus in each in each business district.
Well, I still think just more for years, more for years.
Here's here's the thing, this is.
Here to miss with like ten miles, you know, by the time you do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so let me, let me.
It doesn't sound like the technology thing.
Yeah, the technology.
Well, 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 and but the technology may be there, you you know, and I haven't had the conversations or even begun to explore a hybrid option. You know, and the state may be in support of that.
But if it's not, if we're not in support of it, why are we gonna send Sabrina on a wild goose?
Well, and then that's what I'm trying to get to is what do you guys really want? And so when I gave you this memo and I I did, and again, these are just like rough and tumble numbers, right?
Oh, yeah, they were numbers all right.
Right, but if this is before, this is, you know, just look at the numbers and are you willing to spend that for an electric shuttle?
Hybrid vehicles are cheaper than.
You know, there are rebates available to us of about ninety thousand dollars, so if you look at the difference between a six battery and a trolley, two hundred fifty K to two hundred eighty K, you get a voucher for ninety, you get a grant for a hundred, this is not con- even considering Summit Greenfield's obligation. The cost would be sixty K and this includes the chargers or ninety K and it how.
Well, what if it was hybrid, isn't that cheaper usually?
I do not, I know nothing, I mean, I'm not so, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah.
Sabrina, I think it sounds like we're all pretty unaffordable about the hybrid, right?
Wait a minute, I think where I I don't know, I think where we are right now is that the electric vehicle right now, while a wonderful idea is not a practical solution, is a shared solution.
Yeah.
Unless we find some.
Unless we're misunderstanding and it works, it doesn't sound like it works.
Information, but I I agree, I think it's gonna be difficult to be a shared solution.
But if a hybrid could actually give us the distance that we need, so that this thing become more of a workhorse rather than, you know, that that can actually like meet all the transportation objectives.
So then I would suggest.
And it was acceptable to the state, which is a separate question.
Well, well, uh, well, and that is the driving question. And so then I think we have the the dealer do the electric analysis and I would like that result prior to talking to the state, cause that helps justify the change we need and the acceptability of a potential hybrid.
Definitely.
In the meantime, I can explore some hybrid options and just kind of get a sense of what that means, um, and whether.
See if you have a hybrid trolley.
I.
I absolutely, I I mean, honestly, if you look at the difference between the trolley cost and the van cost, you know, it's not that much considering what you get at a choice.
Well, the the thing with the choice.
Yeah, trolley's, trolley's cool.
Let me, let me, let me, listen, uh.
It's just very quaint, like it's quaintly.
I'm gonna raise my hand, can you hold it?
Yes, Jeremy.
Thank you, Councilman Slade.
Um, I I yield to uh Mr. Casca from uh, so um Summit Greenfield, and tell me if I'm I'm wrong, but I don't think I am, Summit Greenfield has a a minimum of a two-year commitment.
After.
After the East Village is complete, so we're looking at five years.
Right, okay.
Yeah, probably. In the event, in the event that it's not something that's ever takes off.
And it won't be, they're gonna put people in the panel in.
Right, a normal van, just like everybody else.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, and like a panel, like a.
So it's a, and and the use of this of this van, or whatever you wanna call it, it's 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 not something that we
Not awful, it's functional.
It's not exciting, right?
That really reaches the level of use that anyone anticipated. So now we've invested this money in something that we have that is really not being used. And we're we're gonna invest significant dollars, even if it's a, I can use the term marriage to Summit Greenfield, um, for something that may be a flop.
What what I'm hearing from you guys is you don't wanna partnership with Summit Greenfield, I think so, that's what I'm hearing.
So there are there are other uses for that money that are environmentally sensitive and smart and valuable, even though, even if they're not sexy, fun and exciting, such as lights.
Unless unless the senior man, I think.
Well, we do like the idea of the trolley for transportation around the country.
I think, but then the true bit, if that's a, it's one thing to spend that kind of money
Oh, he's here's the thing, but you know, wait, wait.
if it ultimately is not going to be valuable.
Because it's also valuable for people who wanna maybe go to the train and don't have an extra
If, if.
don't wanna have to buy an extra car, which is environmentally friendly, they could take it from Millwood to the train and if it doesn't lose.
Well, that's why this race, that's why I did.
I don't I don't have to believe that that many people are going to use it.
And I don't know that we need to provide it, like I'm not, I don't know.
Right, but that ultimately comes to the responsibility of the town, especially if you're guarded with Summit Greenfield, it'd be like all us.
I actually, I actually think that um.
Right, they're gonna have enough access.
All us, we have to hire a full-time driver, I mean, it becomes real dollars in five years.
No, I agree, I agree. Insurance, maintenance. Let's not forget also that the Sustainability Advisory Board, this was, I'm not saying it had to follow their recommendation, but let's just not forget that this was.
We spent a long time.
Absolutely, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
Their recommendation, and they're the ones who enable those.
But I don't think they knew it was only seventy miles, the first time we talked to the Sustainability Advisory Board.
That's probably true.
No, I agree.
Well, we have, we have, listen, it's not that, here's the thing, you folks are the decision makers.
I'm not saying I disagree with what you guys are saying, I'm just throwing that out there.
There are valid reasons why it might not be feasible to move forward with this.
Alright, so we need to give you an answer stat.
Well, well, here here's the thing, I think you guys need more information and, you know, are you, what I hear tonight is you're really questioning the electric vehicle. You're toying with the idea of a hybrid vehicle, you do not wanna partnership with Summit Greenfield. And if the state would, here's a question for you, if the state agrees to a hybrid and we can get all the discounts and everything and it's, you know, at most, let's say a hundred K for a trolley, not including a driver, would you want to move forward with a hybrid?
What what is Summit Greenfield's responsibility in terms of cost, so we wouldn't use our all?
We would have to negotiate that.
We wouldn't have to give our, all of our hundred K, cause we could then allocate some of that towards, again, example, lights, because if it's a hundred K.
Whoa, 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 I think I think that's jumping, all I think is.
Makes me very nervous.
This, this.
Second that we're jumping ahead of the information.
I think it makes me very nervous to work with Summit Greenfield on this.
If if the hybrid vehicle is substantially less expensive and makes the economics more.
So it's, I think the shuttle, the lights.
I like the, I like the trolley idea a little bit.
The problem that I'm actually seeing is.
I don't know, they will get as much of a voucher with a hybrid.
I'm fearful that it's not going to be.
Right, but we need to check it out, so I think if, you know, your nice new guy, yeah.
I don't think.
You grab the car and say, okay, I'm gonna go down to.
My nice new guy has a lot of stuff to do, don't worry about it, we'll do it.
Okay.
I will, I will, I will move forward, I'm very much in favor of this one with motive, what this is, because I have a situation, I don't understand.
You notice, if it's gonna come back.
I'll tell you. There are many times where my husband, like I'm going into the city, then I have to say over and I don't wanna bring my car there
Then I had to go back.
I understand.
We need to explore alternatives.
or I'm meeting him in the city later and he would take a trolley.
And see if that meets our needs, but the fundamental question I need you folks to answer
Why, would you, would you take a trolley, trolley across the street?
No, he would be.
Is exploring an alternative vehicle something you want me to do? Because that requires all of the burden if we are not partnering with Summit Greenfield to be borne by the town. And when I say burden, the insurance, the driver, that is all town.
Yeah.
And that's something that right now with a partnership, we could put back on Summit Greenfield.
And Sabrina, so worst case, so the 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 town does have a van, uh, uh, that they use for the seniors center.
They have a senior bus.
That's what I'm saying.
And like, how many miles are on that, is that like almost at the end of its useful life?
I I don't know, he was needing a new van.
But that's that's what I'm saying, so if this doesn't work out, could we, you know, in that van, like in other words, we have, we have a replacement.
When we explore use for the seniors, cause our first stop was toward town, town or.
No, 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 you're not hearing me, I'm saying, in other words, is that gonna, almost at the end of its useful life? And then if the thing with Summit doesn't work out, we can always just use it for that group. The thing is, when we explored with the seniors, we were exploring an electric one, we were talking about going to the city.
And it wasn't.
It went, right, so if we're talking about now, uh, and we're talking about, we're talking about a hybrid.
Run a gas or an electric.
Okay, I think I think people see some benefit in having the shuttle. Everybody's concerned about whether it's gonna be util- utilized enough, and I think this consensus is we we don't wanna team up with Summit Greenfield.
The shuttle costs.
So if if we basically look to replacing the senior shuttle with some sort of hybrid that the seniors can use, that the town can use from time to time for different events maybe
Sure.
at the Chapel Performing Arts Center, and and it's more environmentally friendly as opposed to this old uh, senior shuttle, then it seems like we're we're checking off a lot of the boxes and avoiding some of the problems.
Did you guys approve a new, a new senior van, did you just get one, did you just get one?
No.
No, they didn't just get one, no, I think they didn't just get one, I think.
I don't think so.
Because Jack Arthur.
Jail on the budget, because I know that, I don't remember that being in sight.
Yeah.
Right, that's a different way, yeah, dreadful vehicle.
No, well, I know, we've looked into it, but we've never started this endeavor.
Right, and we're killing some already asked.
Right, 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 that's a, that's satisfying the SAB's recommendation.
It wasn't, it's not, it's not, was it, we said, budget?
Exactly, and even if we're not done with it, we could only just sell it.
That's exactly, okay.
We could, we could, even if we're not technically done with it, like, we could still sell it as an auction, whatever we do.
And I guess. One of the other things I would say, because it is an unproven idea as to what the actual demand is.
Right, I think it's auction.
And, you know, to go and make a huge hundred thousand dollar investment with unproven demand, you know, I sometimes wonder whether that's the best use of town money. But I think it's a concept, I, that is definitely worth exploring, whether or not we can improve connectivity in a more environmentally friendly way. Is there programs through this guy where, for example, we have the driver, we can lease a a hybrid, either a hybrid or an electric vehicle?
Not through this guy.
I think Rob's ideas, what's, what's his say, I think Rob's ideas, yeah, if you replace.
It replaces, it replaces senior shuttle bus, we can use it for that. I'm not sure it was completely Rob's idea, it was more like a joint idea. No, it was.
You're actually, no, I told you last night.
I think.
You did, no, Adam's, Adam started saying it and I was about to say as well. I think it was your idea.
So anyways, I will go see something else, but I think it's an idea that's worth exploring.
Like Ian, yeah. At the same place.
Absolutely, and and I will look into the whole hybrid solution, I mean, honestly, guys, you know, I know you guys, I I would like to see you make a decision.
We know there's a demand for that.
You guys need more information to make a decision. Rather than calling around other towns for their experiences, I think it is more valuable to see what a hybrid gas-electric would do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a.
And then, and then when we get information regarding the route analysis
That's gonna be a decision maker.
and the information regarding a hybrid, I can make an educated phone call to our state rep and explain to them the dilemma
Exactly, and then we need a hybrid.
that we're having, as far as the lighting, okay? The downtown streetlights are eight hundred thousand dollars is the total cost. Okay, a hundred thousand dollars is a.
First possibility.
Should we take those out of the budget or not?
No.
No, those are in the budget.
Those are in the budget, those are definitely in the budget. David Cassidy died, sorry. All sixty of them.
Fifty five, sixty-two, I think, sixty.
Sixty, okay, close enough.
What's what's a light on one of those bulbs?
They really do, they should be for, they should be forever.
Yeah.
They never die, until like a week later they die. I've got one.
I actually, what was your history, yeah, we die, my, my.
I have a bulb that already hours. I know, I did too, I've seen it already out.
I did, I did mention a joke earlier about the temperature of the bulbs for the streets, you know, like, I don't like, I don't know if that's a conversation for right now, but like, you know, that
They flicker.
I don't want those like super white lights like they have in front of Walgreens.
I provided.
Like the twenty-seven hundred.
Right.
I provided the town engineer with the specifications as recommended by DEC's lighting consortium for that included temperature, but attempt.
Consortium is impossible, we're about.
How long and short of it, are they white or they ta- are they light now, okay, daylight?
I I don't have.
Like, they have changed them recently.
They have changed them recently.
Yeah, they've.
Right, that's that's our course, council, let's stay on course.
This is more updated, the information hot off the press, included in our draft number.
Alright, so let's let Sabrina go sort of hit stuck with this anymore.
Oppose two-way traffic at Allen Place is your next topic. Look at Nick moving us along.
Alright, so.
Okay.
You know, do you need me?
No.
I I don't understand, I, we were talking about Washington, right?
No. Thanks, Sabrina.
Well, no. Thank you, Sabrina.
There's an email I saw that said.
Happy Thanksgiving, you too.
I didn't mention, no, Alan, I didn't, Alan, I think is what you're talking about.
Well, that's what's on the agenda.
We're not talking about King Street.
Do you need me to talk about that?
Alan.
Yes, correct.
Alan, is that Washington? No, we're talking about the, your idea.
Washington, yeah, 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 the email said a different street.
To make it two-way. Oh, wow.
Is Alan placed into the train.
You're talking, you're talking two-way in the parking lot.
Yes, I'll send an email.
That's why there was a picture of the parking lot in the email.
There's a map, that's why there was a question.
Yes, yes, what I'm saying is the email from the chief when they were describing, they mentioned a different street.
This, right?
Always. No.
Richard Washburn.
Good night.
Thanks, Sabrina, happy Thanksgiving.
And I was, that's what I said, what are you talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, but that's already two-way. So there was a map before you.
So I don't understand why you may think that this is undoable because it interfered with traffic going southbound. How does the, how does people making a left from Allen Place onto Washington Street not interfere with people going southbound on Washington Avenue? I mean, it does, I don't understand the rationale, other than you're losing spaces.
You are losing a lot of spaces.
You're losing, yeah, you're losing what, you're like six spaces, was it?
And there's on the other side too.
We're gonna have to ERB to.
Both sides.
Both sides, it's not, you can't see it on here.
I I think that if you can take traffic out of downtown giving anyone who wants to go up one seventeen or who may come over Reader's Digest Roaring Brook and come up that way, instead of coming through town, you go, you know, by Annandale and cross over the Sawmill there, so people come there and go down one seventeen as opposed, as opposed to going.
You're talking about coming in, you're talking about coming in. Just so we're clear, what you're, what you're proposing is to make the entrance to the train station two-way.
Right, so I'm saying there's a lot of people, right, so there's a lot of people.
No, but that's what you're talking about.
Wait, but who's not coming this way?
Anyone who lives.
This is still not a right, a right-hand turn.
Well.
Right, anybody who lives off of one seventeen, if you, if you were going to the train station.
Stay on one seventeen.
You're gonna stay on one seventeen if you want, who would not have to deal with the traffic or anything like that coming downtown, passing the bridge.
Pass Bethel, then make the right.
Got it.
You're gonna just keep on going straight, anyone who lives off of Reader's Digest, Roaring Brook,
Got it.
whether you're on one side of the Sawmill, it'll make a difference, if you don't wanna come down through town, you can cross over the Sawmill, come down one seventeen to avoid going over that bridge if you're inclined. But anybody, if you can take, and I don't remember the number, whether it's ten percent or fifteen percent.
So you're, you're telling people to get in the line to go over or through the high school, pass Chapel, crossing that way?
Right now, a lot of people, right, well, unfortunately, it's gonna change, but right now, people do that because they don't, because the back to get over the bridge in town is a nightmare. So if you, you can often make a right immediately out of the station and get onto one seventeen quite easily. I do it all the time, in fact, I never, never is a bold word, I probably eighty-five percent of the time make a right off of Washington Avenue and get onto one seventeen, even though it's slightly closer if I go through.
Yep. Yep.
So Jeremy, so you're saying in the morning, or or at all times you want it two-way or you want it two-way?
Well, all times, yeah, well, what did you make, because in the morning, if you're a later person, let's say if you're in the eightish, seven thirty, eightish, your school buses and stuff like that, why why bother coming through town? You're you're.
You're gonna lose a lot of.
So so let's think about it out loud for a moment, then what about as opposed to quietly, we can try that too?
Are we doing this out loud?
And then all these, all these spots here that are kind of angled.
The ones that were on the.
These parallel parking spots you're gonna use.
Yeah, you're you're approaching, you you're approaching the wrong direction.
So you live, you're gonna, you're gonna, so you you lose some of this, but you could also, uh, you know, I know that there are some trees here and some grass, but if you if you could widen it slightly and angle it slightly, you have access, I I just don't understand why you would take an entire parking lot
Yeah. My concern would be, this would be my concern.
and moving, everybody's gotta go.
No, I know, this would be my concern, is in the morning, when people are rushing to make a train, if you now have two-way traffic going in, so you have people coming in this way, you, they now have to make a left turn across traffic coming this way to get into the parking lot. Right, so you now have people coming in off of Washington, right, in this way.
And they make a right, they're making a right into.
They're making a right into the train station, they wanna park here, everyone's train is coming,
That's right.
Right.
they now have to make a left turn to get into where the, other than these few spots, they have to make a left turn to park. You also have traffic coming this way.
No, 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 so I think the solution to that, the solution to that is other.
And then these spots.
And then nobody wants to park here, so just just, just listen to the rest of the system, nobody wants to park back here.
And you'll make these spots.
They wanna see if there are spots closest to the train, so now you're gonna have people driving in this way, coming in here, and I just feel like it's gonna end up being a traffic nightmare, cause there aren't gonna be spots here, but you don't know that there's not spots here.
It already is a traffic nightmare.
So I think this.
You know it if you've driven this way, so you don't know if it's a traffic, how worried.
It's a pretty sophisticated drive.
The solution to, the solution to that would be in part to have one-way signs, big ones right somewhere around the second lane,
Yeah.
so that people know that they can't go that way, it it, so it's it's double-striked and then it's one-way and and do not enter, so you have to turn.
And do not enter.
Oh, I see.
So it's only double-strike to get in?
It's double-strike up until you do the first call, right.
And then you all lose as many spots.
End up with all this traffic back here.
But you don't lose as many as many spots along here too, you only use a couple.
Yeah.
Exactly, so you have to turn this way, now the next question, next issue would be, you may end up losing some other spots, you're saving spots here, but you're gonna may lose some spots where people parallel park along.
Why?
Because this, if you wanted to make a right and go down.
Show me, I can't see.
If you wanna make a right, go just kinda near the Sawmill, you know, where all these other cars are parked nose in, it's it's, that's now, you can't have two cars going.
Yeah. Oh, I see.
So you'd have to be a little creative, but in it's, in my, you you could probably, again.
It's kinda dangerous, I don't even like having two cars go down these aisles.
I I it's, it's, there's, you're forcing everybody to downtown, because it should, it doesn't need to be there.
I think we should try.
No, I get it, I get it.
I think we could try.
You just need to be there.
Might even get to Chief, should what needs to weigh in.
I just wanna make sure we've analyzed all that.
Yeah, he did, he did, he waited, he was. But I I don't know if he, you know, his issue was about traffic continuing southbound on Washington Avenue, I don't understand that issue. It's more of an issue, I think, once you're in the parking lot.
Washington Avenue.
Right, because he said it interferes, in his email that he sent, he said it would interfere with traffic going in Washington southbound, I didn't understand what he meant by that. Cause I don't understand why that interferes with.
Yeah, I don't see why that understands.
Well, how how does it not interfere with it now when people are going northbound, I I don't understand, I think.
Cause you're not gonna have that many people coming northbound off Washington to make a left into that.
Right, you're not gonna have many people.
Right.
Um, you know, I again, also me. Um, you know, I again, also me.
I think Buffalo has their own.
Only when, because Buffalo has their own train station, so you're not gonna get so many people coming.
I would, I would.
I think it's talking about the end of the day, because then they, people just make a right out of the lot.
But they do that anyway.
Yeah.
When you're coming out of the lot.
But you won't have that if you do that, but if you do it two-way, you won't have that.
Why wouldn't you?
He is.
Why wouldn't you?
Why wouldn't you have two-way?
You have three lanes?
No, if you have, if you, so we're looking at the left.
Cause they back up, they back up here.
But it's simply. Still gonna back up, you're still gonna make a left or a right, it's not gonna make a difference.
There's not so.
Yeah, so you're not gonna be able to.
There's not, there's not so much traffic in my experience.
No, they back up and they can't, they can't get on.
I don't know what the traffic now.
Oh, you're saying, you're saying, um, cause now if a car going left can kinda go to the left side of this, and a car going right can just turn and not have to wait if there's traffic on.
And then they come out there. Yeah.
Right, that's true.
Because it's wide enough here for two cars.
And they get. Yeah, I saw it tonight.
Right.
So if cars are coming out and someone wants to make a left, they can scoot over to the left, but.
Yes.
I don't think that really happens, so a little bit, right, so.
I I don't know that there are not any people going right.
I happened tonight, I was stuck in the traffic with the queue.
There's it's very few people go, it's very few, yes, very few, because you're right on place, there's very few people.
I realize most people are going left.
They're going to a different town.
Um, right, so even even if you look at it.
That's how I go on.
To the right?
To the right, and I'm.
Yeah, you're you're probably a typical, you're a typical.
But you're not parked in a train station.
No, but I'm parked here, right?
Right, you're, you're, but people parking the train station are Newcastle commuters.
Right.
Right.
Um, and.
My husband, sorry.
But she's still, she's still leaving, and she's just le- leaving, leaving twenty feet over, it's the same problem.
My husband, my husband's Newcastle here. Yeah. Yeah, I'm in Newcastle.
Yeah.
Hey, but you can also, no, I, but I don't mean it that way, I'm saying that it's Newcastle commuters.
I wouldn't insult you to say you're not a local.
I know, I know.
I know.
You're very insulting.
She's still trying to write down.
I know, I was operative especially, I was very insulting.
She's still trying to like, Jeremy.
Yeah, this is what I'm saying, I'm saying.
You're still trying to avoid downtown.
Yes. You're Newcastle commuters, you're.
He, I just disagree with him, whatever he was like, disagree.
Most people are making a left, if you go and look, most people at night are making a left down.
She's trying to avoid downtown.
Yeah.
But because, like, because most people don't live in Pleasantville.
Right, that absolutely.
There are people making rights, but most people are making a left.
Yeah.
Right, that you're making a left.
So you could always widen that, so even you could allow it, I mean, I I just think it should be examined more, not, I.
Yeah.
I think, I'm into an examining, I I think, this is what I, this is what I think, I, for whatever it's worth, this is what I think, I think we should look at the whole parking lot.
Yeah. Okay, I'm in there, now I'm in here.
There's only people off of that.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should look at that, I think we should look at also turning Lower King into two-way, I think we should look into turning, moving the the taxi stand to the other side uh of the Chapua Station, and maybe use the current taxi stand for like a a food pickup location for the restaurants, that people can go there and and pick up their food.
Mm.
I think we should look at adding some parking for maybe people that are pregnant, we've talked about that, uh, in addition to the handicap, I think there's a lot of things in the train station that we can look at to try to make it so that we can alleviate some of this traffic at night, um.
And the day.
And the day, yeah, that would mean the night, mostly, it's it's mostly the evening commute, and you should look at by taking down that hill, whether you can pick up some other spots if you're gonna lose some over here.
You can have designated spots for pregnant people.
You're not, uh, and when you take, when you take down that hill. It's my favorite thing with the hill.
I would be offended if someone thought I was handicapped, because I was pregnant.
No, it would be instead of being a standard issue.
No, I don't think it's, it's not just a handicap, I think you're you're.
No, there are some places that have parking space, but then, but then they have a little sign like with a little, uh, you know, baby carriage on it, if you're expecting.
But I don't know if you think of this as a holiday.
Right, I don't know if we should probably do that.
Why not?
Cause it's not protected, less.
But not more. Would you park, would you park now, go, we might be able to.
They have it in private property, yeah, I've seen it.
I'll look after it after six months, like, thirty weeks in a month, that's it.
Private property.
Somebody recommended it to us, that's a good idea, that's all.
I don't know, somebody asked me once if I was pregnant.
Let's not go there, you too.
Alright, so, uh, what's the next step of this, because I really, I I I I am, I I think that just the value of getting people out of downtown helps business, helps walk a bit.
I think, check it out.
It helps.
I don't know that it's necessarily gonna be people today, I stopped at Starbucks on my way here, and I was so late because I got stuck trying to get out of here. Whether it's two ways is not gonna make a difference.
You got stuck going in.
It took me ten minutes to get, because I had to park in the back, because there was no place on street, it took me ten, and I, there were so many cars coming out on, um, whatever the street is, right here, oh, yeah, well, so, One Woodburg, so from here to here took me fifteen minutes.
Washburn.
Wash, Woodburg.
Yeah, it's a nightmare.
But then, because we have.
Well, whether it's two ways, I am making difference.
No, it's like that, so we talked to all people coming in.
I was coming, I was going home from here around quarter to five.
And not, when they come in, they don't have to come downtown.
It was twenty-five minutes to get from the train station to the other side of the Plague River Bridge.
I don't know the number, what was thirty cars, what if it was a hundred car to take off, I don't know the answer, there was eight o'clock, an eight o'clock commuter, a seven thirty commuter,
It's crazy.
anyone passing the late sevens wouldn't have to come through through town, they could come out the back way, because by then you're already in the back lots.
But also, what about, what about people that wanna go down Lower King Street and 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 go to the stores on Lower King Street at five o'clock in the afternoon, or six o'clock or seven o'clock, and they don't wanna do that because they're gonna wind up getting stuck in the train station.
Look, a hundred percent.
They have to drive all the way.
But maybe, Lower King, I'm sorry, I know that, you know, not.
They'll lose all those spots, right?
We're gonna lose spots, but I honestly, in my opinion, and I I know a lot of merchants on that street agree with me, the benefits are gonna far outweigh the loss of those spots. Not just, I mean, you're gonna have, take advantage of people who are gonna be leaving that way, f- three hundred, four hundred cars every night is gonna be going out there, and some of those people are gonna stop and pick up food.
Where are they gonna park?
That's the problem, where they gonna park.
They're gonna just drive past it, wait.
No, they have, they have parallel parking, they have spots before, they have spots behind it, and, uh, but now, if you guys wanna do that, now's the time.
They have. Be parallel parking. Too many spots.
Narrow there.
But now, if you guys wanna do that, now's the time.
Could you have, speaking, speaking of, speaking of the food.
Really narrow. I think it's definitely, I think that is one of the ways to actually change the whole commuting experience, because people who are heading east
I think it's narrow.
Exactly. How about just saying?
will then be able to make a right-hand, go out of the train station, make a right-hand turn and go straight. People heading west will be able to get over the bridge.
Go over the bridge.
Because it it now's the time, because they're putting in the traffic light, now would be the time to make that decision.
Mm-hmm.
It completes a square, it completes a square, right now, we have a three-sided square, it's crazy.
I agree with you.
Right.
Yeah, I.
And before they do the curbing.
And I, and 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 now that you're saying this, what I will do is I will take a look at, I will go down and maybe sit in A S O P Fable Window with a cocktail and go watch the amount of left people, people out and.
What what?
By the third cocktail, the traffic's gonna be great.
Try. Yeah.
I just, I don't think you would fit right apart in there.
What about, when you mentioned, when you mentioned the four.
Doesn't the park is a problem. You can't fit parallel parts, but anyway, it's not a number.
We're talking about, we've talked about moving the the, the cab station over.
No, no, we just have one lane, one, you got one spot.
You know, what we could also do is we could probably ask for a register receipts, right?
Move like for registered receipts, right?
We could move all the spots.
Fifteen or twenty, you'd lose all of them, but look, uh, so, I have, hold on, I have the conch, I have the conch, one second, so, um, if.
No, sixteen, sixteen.
I, I, uh, uh, so, I have, hold on, I have the conch, I have the conch, one second, so, um, if.
I could do that.
Sixteen is fine.
Not a bad idea, it's, it's a lot of spot.
If you made that cab station, not just, for example, for Chapua Station, but if all, if A S O Ps, if anyone, a- anyone could have that as a drop-off, and we can charge rent for all the local, Bellarinas could drop, have it there, so
Yeah.
everyone would have a spot in there, and that they could use it, can we do that as a town to to, is it a private interest to say, listen, this is gonna be a place, you're coming off that, you want, you want Bellarinas, you want sushi, it's gonna be left there for you in that location, and people can pick it up, and that could be the pickup spot, everyone coming off.
But it also could be, it could also be.
Then someone's got to man that.
Not just want, not just, not just, well, they can figure that out.
Listen, it could be the chamber.
Like, like a, like a laundry there.
Per- like a food ballet.
Yeah.
Listen, it could be the chamber, it could be the chamber commerce that does it too, and that's a way that they get their members, and it's not just food.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think about it on like Fridays, it could be, I think it could be, or it could be dry cleaning, it's a good idea, or it could be also people selling flowers, especially on Mother's Day and like Val- I gotta be careful with this word, Valentine's Day.
Dry cleaning.
Clean.
Could be anything.
Why, be careful.
That's a hard word.
I sometimes say Valentine's.
Okay.
Um, but the point is, it.
Sometimes I've mispronounced unium too, but.
You get Amazon packages delivered there.
The point.
They have, are they actually, they, they actually have something like that at the Crowe Station.
Bro, so we could probably. Yes, you could do that, I, cause you could, ready, if you build a structure there and some kind of.
The art of building.
That's like a.
People use it, people use it a lot.
I could, I think it'd be great value.
We could, we could do.
It's a lot.
We could do a art of, think of releasing something.
And.
And that solves, that solves the issue of of who's gonna stop at at village, village market, if they can't park.
You have to release it something.
It is a cool idea.
Well, if you know that you wanna get something in advance, you could email them in advance, or call them in advance, you'll, you can leave it there.
Yeah, you could text it, you know.
It's like in an apartment building where you have a ballet, like, it's explicitly, it's it's being ahead of time, it's basically, it's.
Right. It's a cool idea.
I think it's a great idea, Jeremy.
It's a cool idea, I'm saying.
And we move, and we, and we move the, uh, we move the taxi stand away, by the way, which will clear up some of the congestion.
That's true, but that is a cool idea.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a cool idea.
It should definitely, the taxi stand is, I have seen those taxi drivers.
The taxi stand should not be there.
Walk, stand still.
We're cool interested.
Almost.
We're giving, we're giving the taxi stand the prime spots, it's crazy.
Many, many people backing into those spots, it's a floor.
Yeah, we're on the same page, so how do we look into that? What what are the steps?
It almost fit me.
Well, that costs money, we have to move it.
Well, right, so I think you have to speak with the planning department, probably, and see what space is available where you could move the taxi cab, I mean, you you're now not talking about.
No, we're at different.
We gotta evolve, we, I mean, they're they're not actually exclusive, yes, we're just like, think about that.
Yeah.
Well, we're looking at the whole train station. Look at the whole train station.
Is that parking lot?
So I think that's what we should do, is ask staff to look at a redesign of the train station, traffic patterns, and uses so that you meet modern needs of the residents.
They're studying.
Is the parking lot behind Marmalade, private?
Well, but it, bring them in there, it works that way.
What?
The parking lot behind like Marmalade, is that a private parking lot?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, that little parking lot, it is private, and also the one behind Susan Lawrence's pride, behind the bookstore, is that?
That usually.
Yeah.
One thing that administration.
I'm sorry.
I think, I think.
Yes.
That makes sense.
So you should talk to the, I don't know.
Yes, but that, um, it's private, it's private, and also it sort of connects into the one behind Susan Lawrence, and both of them are private.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
No, that, that is the same property, and, yeah.
Yeah. Isn't, cause it looks like one's got a loading dock at the back of it.
No, it is, it's the same, it used to be the post office.
You can get through, oh, you can't get through.
Do we have directions?
You cannot get through, we've actually.
So.
Alright, so so we just want to sort of.
I'm.
Just wanna make sure we have directions, okay?
Yeah, and so can I just, we're back to the Allen Place, I know Jerry, the chief, and Bob wanted to do a walkthrough and kinda see what was feasible, what wasn't.
I was thinking. Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe that is the next step, and then maybe have one of them or all of them come to speak at one of the next work sessions.
Right, just ask them about, you know, the the viability of even expanding that, the mouth or the entrance, so that you can accommodate.
But but making it lower, but making it Lower King two-way.
Within the train area.
A right turn lane. It means accommodate a right turn lane.
If we're gonna do that, like, now's the time, because like, on March, April, like, it's gonna be under construction, I mean, now's the time.
Right, right.
I honestly think, and every, and everybody you speak to, there's a good idea with the exception of.
But you can't do that until there's a light.
Oh, no, but the light, I mean, it's all going, it's all part and parcel.
You know.
Yeah.
We should speak to the chamber, we should speak to the local shop owners and what their view is about that, because that, you know, it's one thing to have a service station where you can get your food and your dry cleaning, but you're gonna get a, you know, if you're gonna stop to the bookstore or the barber, you're not going, that that they're gonna be inhibited.
Mm.
Do we have to have a public hearing if we wanna make a one-way street into two ways? Or even into a one-way other direction?
No, is it private roads, no, you don't have to.
Lower King.
I mean, it's not private, I'm sorry.
Lower King, it's lower King.
We couldn't do it until we get the traffic light anyway.
Alright, I'm seeing it as a parking lot, being.
No, but if it was something we wanted to do, you would certainly eliminate the spot, you wouldn't have them striped spots, you would, you know, there's that bump out, you even, you would do that.
Oh, yeah, of course, it's a, it can't be. Yeah, but the curbing would be very, would be different.
Yeah, the curbing would be different, you could still keep it one-way for now.
Right, you know, I'm just. And you'd have to buy that other way, I, I think we should start that conversation, definitely, but I think we should look at the whole train station as well.
It's like a train station, right?
Right, since it's on the agenda, let's move on, it's on the agenda.
And, uh, to talk about everything.
You're gonna speak to Bob and.
Yeah, and do you want everything done at the, you want everything looked at at the same time?
If they can.
Well, I mean, it's comprehensive.
Yeah.
You just need to get it in the same table.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, and I don't wanna say, I know you guys are gonna mock me, but we could get a committee of of residents who are interested in this issue and and work on it.
The problem is, I don't know that any, I mean, I could.
But I wasn't thinking you guys are gonna mock me, I was thinking he's gonna mock me.
I could, I could, I might be wrong and 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 really minimizing the knowledge of our residents, but I don't know if any resident has enough
But John Erlich does, uh.
traffic, maybe, but you know, we could get one, but, but seriously, I need, think we need like a traffic engineer, someone who who
Ooh, we do on it.
John Erlich's not dying to do that, he's.
has expertise in that area to look at it, I mean, we can get plenty of residents to say, yeah, this should be a good idea, but we need, we need like expertise.
I'm with you.
I stay in the holiday.
I, I'm with you.
But John, honestly, I think John Erlich would would enjoy working on it, I think he actually, I think.
I would.
John, when you watch this later, if you will, we're gonna ask people.
Eliminate it. I mean, we could, we could head up organizing the experts, but I don't.
I'm gonna do traffic.
Alright, so you're, so we're. So you're sorry, move that.
We need experts, Thomas.
Everything.
Wallace lease extension, so in your package, you have the Wallace lease extension, starts on page thirty-eight.
Okay.
You may recall the town accepted the dedication of it, but until the property is subdivided through a planning board process, the town won't actually be the fee owner of the property, therefore, the resolution draft agreement just extends the lease of the walls for one additional year pursuant to the same terms.
For the same one dollar.
Right, same terms.
Who's paying the rent? Who's paying the rent?
Make a resolution.
Oh, you want me to do this?
Well, no, so this will be on for your next meeting.
No, we have it on for today.
We have to.
Was it, you do, why did you?
I know.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, we have five.
For Jill's sake. But we're gonna do the resolutions at the end, but that's okay, cause we have a few, sorry.
Uh, that we're gonna vote on.
Okay. Yeah.
I think kind of resolution.
That's okay.
No, I know.
Next one is your donate, the donation to the Newcastle Police Department.
So there are, um, folks here donating two thousand eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and they asked the chief what he needed, and they are, uh, portable barricades to be used at crime scenes, emergencies, things like that, they're just things that fit in the back of the car and open up, so, next time we'll accept that donation.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Good.
The next is a film application, um, a local resident who was formerly a student, did, um, a film in town, and it was a free film because he was a student. So now he's working on a music video at Gedney Park, at, uh, next week, so he's asking, he didn't budget too much to do the music video, so he's asking to do it for three hundred dollars.
Is he still a student or now he's a resident?
No, he's, he's no longer a resident, he grew up here, um, he's based in the city, but he didn't budget that much, he thought it would be cheaper than what we would charge.
Well, how do we get to that?
Why, why are we supposed to?
Also, you're, you're. You're not, so your code doesn't, as you've drafted it, it doesn't allow for you to, doesn't give you authority to waste.
Is he still a student?
But it's.
So what's, what's the fee?
No.
The fee is fifteen hundred dollars, is what I'm having in mind of.
Yeah, and it's just like a very small, low-budget music video.
But why three hundred, not one hundred or six hundred?
He just budgeted three hundred, so I asked him to put in his email, if you see here, what he's prepared to pay, and he said three hundred.
Twenty-four.
I mean, are we allowed to do that, just cause somebody asked?
Do we get credit?
Is he still there?
Yes, and there's a record.
No, we're not allowed to do that, no, hollow, we can't do it, we're not allowed to do it.
And the director.
Right.
That anyone could say, oh, yeah, I don't wanna pay that much.
Right, cause you have your, you have your filming fee.
He should have researched what the film fee was.
If you want him, if you want him.
Right.
Can the down board get a cameo, cause if we can talk.
I mean, if we're allowed to do it, that's one thing, but I think there are certain things we're just not allowed to do, like rebates and things like that, just because we feel bad.
Well, you have your. Right, you, you have to.
Right, you have to treat all project equally, and what you've done is you've set up a fee schedule, but you've determined what it is, so if this causes you to think maybe you wanna change your fee schedule, you can do so.
Right.
But we can't grant a one-time exception for this individual.
Okay, so the answer is no.
Okay, that's right, so, that's, that's a big no.
Right. It's that page forty-seven, should have stayed our fees on it.
Bummer. I know, apologize, Jim.
Next.
Yeah, I think there's something we wanted to, we just can't.
What defines a major commercial production?
Then you have, uh.
Anything, usually.
Oh.
This is not a major commercial production, so.
That would be like a movie.
What about Danny says, the more you know, and, you know, and it's just a rainbow comes out, then you can charge a hundred bucks, it's public service?
Yeah.
Then edit it out later.
Okay.
So on your page forty-eight, there's a request for the MFPD-PDCP extension request.
So why don't you explain that?
So for, so for Chapua Crossing, um, this is in connection, MFPD is a multifamily, they had previously received approvals for the MFPD-PDCP. That's the concept plan, if you will, that allows the residential in East Village. That was approved, um, it was approved for every six months, they've now come in and requesting an extension from, it should be from June sixth, twenty seventeen to December sixth, twenty seventeen, and also a second one from December sixth, twenty seventeen to June sixth, twenty eighteen.
So in other words, minority, let that last.
That approved. That, that approval had lapsed.
So does that mean there needs to be another public hearing?
It, um, no, the law's clear, and we see this.
I just bring it up.
The qualifications, yeah, no, you don't, it's in your discretion, you've done this before, by the way.
No, no, I understand that, I just want, I don't wanna leave it, nothing, not that this one, but in general, I don't wanna leave anything open for an Article seventy-eight.
Yep. No, it's a fair question, there's no, no requirement in the law for a public hearing on this, it's in your discretion if you wish to.
And this is just asking for more time, it's not for a change of.
That's correct, it would just extend and keep in place a presently approved PDCT.
And to be clear, if they came back looking for something else, that would trigger the whole set of.
No, not only they look for something else, but if they, if they submit a plan to the planning board that deviates from what you've approved, they have to come back and get approvals, this is just preserving the status quo. So this isn't on for action for tonight, this will be, uh, next week.
And the town, the planning board has another public hearing like the middle of December, right, on the site plan for.
I. I have not followed that up yet.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And you're gonna follow that, right, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Are you gonna talk about?
On what?
Uh.
Eight thousand square feet?
Well, so just.
Eight thousand square feet.
Well, first one, that was, that was, what I learned, that is, okay, what I learned today, I, I forgot to tell you guys, I'm sorry.
What?
What?
Oh, right, 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 sorry.
I think it's a, it's a, I, I. Oh.
I should have told you especially, it it was actually eight hundred feet, Sabrina messed up what she wrote, did she write eight thousand feet?
Yeah, she said eight thousand.
Oh, wow, that's a big difference.
She did, she did, she said eight thousand feet, it's eight hundred feet, and all it was again, and again, we didn't know anything about this, and it now would make sense. All we knew was that we had, and I think you guys were part of this, when we approved that portable housing in the Cooper building, we said we wanted the playground.
So they have to.
Fourteen, result of fourteen of open space.
By, by, by the, uh, by the, um, Cooper building, they wanted to relocate that playground to near the, um,
That open space.
of by the, the east, the East Village, and that's why it's eight hundred square feet, because that's what it would be by the Cooper building, it's not eight thousand square feet, and then, when you talk, and by the way, that's dead on arrival, that's not happening.
Townhouses. Okay. So.
It's some playground.
Sabrina said that's a Friday.
Well, that, I don't care, we can just, whatever, that that was, I don't care, that's a separate issue, but eight thousand square feet, that was a.
Yeah, but that was a mistake, nobody ever talked about that, and there was, we never heard of it, it just evolved, and it was a mistake, that she said eight thousand, said eight hundred.
Yeah, I'd never heard of that. That makes much more sense.
That makes much more sense.
And eight hundred is consistent with what we do approve, which was by the Cooper.
You were passing around.
And 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 I did go to the planning board packet, and the planning board packet is not posted on the website, so, yeah.
Really? Then you want for the company to.
Any, any packet is not posted on the website.
So just.
And someone can ask Serena.
Go ahead, Dave. Yep, so just for record, you do have on your agenda the scenic easement for Thirty-Sixth Carolin Place, so we should just briefly discuss it. There's a, uh, a scenic easement that the neighbor has a minor encroachment on it, they've requested that the scenic easement be modified to allow this minor encroachment, as reflected in the plans. And we're going to get a letter or memo from the planning board just to confirm that they concur with this, uh, mi- minor modification to the scenic easement, and then it will be placed on your agenda for approval.
Perfect.
Great.
Great, resolutions?
Um, just one more thing, um, Jerry and Bart are asking for permission to go out to bid for alley do streetlights. If you look on page thirty-four, their memo is there.
And that was something that I, I, I don't know if you guys were part of those emails or not, but that was something that Steve, you know, from the S A B, they were actually, they were pushing this.
Mm-hmm.
They wanted this to go out and, uh, so, um.
Go out to bid.
Wait a minute.
Doesn't commit us to doing anything right?
No, it does not.
No, no.
No, and he was gonna, they're gonna include Steve in the conversations on what they're going out to bid for.
Is that in the budgets?
No, yeah, I was gonna say, is this in the budget, is this on top of the budget?
Yeah, it's in the, um, the light district budget.
Oh.
All right, could you just, I I have no problem in theory, as the big rush is what?
And. To be honest, I'm really not sure.
Could you find out what the big rush is, and could you find out to make sure that we have all the backup materials, so if this is already incorporated in the streetscape budget, confirm it. And if it's not incorporated in the streetscape budget, which budget is it coming from?
Oh, this is different street lamps, these are street lamps. Oh, this is different street lamps, these are street lamps around the entire town.
Entire town, and I don't remember, even though it's a great idea, and I know we discussed it broadly speaking, but the actual execution and paying of it, I do not recall being in the budget.
Okay.
Four hundred and eighteen, I thought.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. Yeah, but the the first step was they had put up, I I understand about the budget, I'm not hard to understand.
That, if the, if the S A B just wants to get pricing for the purposes of analysis, could you ask them if that's the rationale for it?
We're seeing for this.
Because if the memo is unclear.
Uh, can I make a, can I make a, a resolution?
Sure.
Are we at that point?
Well, for the, for the bidding, I think we're gonna table it.
Not on that, just resolutions for the.
Yeah, we're gonna get more from you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, are we, do we finish everything else out?
Yeah.
Yeah, go.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to approve payment of claims, the amount of four nine nine three oh eight thirty-one, listed on the summary, pre-check writing report and detailed voucher report, both dated November twenty seventeen checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, November twenty-second, twenty seventeen.
Second. Now just do more.
All the favor.
The next one's Lisa.
Aye.
Aye.
Be a resolve that the town board authorized its town supervisor sign a lease extension with S G Sapqua to extend the term of the town's lease of the facility now known as the Chapacua Performing Arts Center in accordance with the terms set forth in the original lease agreement between said parties dated twelve fifteen twenty fifteen further resolved, the town will continue to use the Chapacua Performing Arts Center as a community arts, culture and conference center for the conduct of meetings, classes and other types of events, both public and private, as determined exclusively by the town in consideration for such use and occupancy, the town will pay S G a nominal rent of one dollar per year be a further resolved, the town has accepted an irrevocable offer of dedication from S G whereby S G agreed to donate the premises to the town for nominal consideration upon subdivision of the land upon which the demised premises is situated it will be conveyed to the town in fee pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement, and the lease agreement will terminate be further resolved in accordance with Article eight of the State Environmental Conservation Law this lease extension is a type-two action pursuant to six N Y C R R six seventeen dot five, C twenty-six, and no further environmental reviews required further resolved, this resolution is adopted subject to a permissive refer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, keep going, I move to authorize Rabbi Butman, Chabad of Northern Westchester, to use the property in front of the community center
Three.
to place a menorah and keep it in place through the Hanukkah season beginning on December twelfth, twenty seventeen.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's it, we're not doing the other, we're not doing the other two.
Let's keep it four, let's keep it five.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.